All right, we're live Hunter, you're good.
Okay, so the first thing we need to do is call the meeting to order. So we'll go ahead and do that and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation led by Larry Zimmerman.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag.
Of the United States of America And to the Republic For which it stands One nation
One nation
Under God
Under God
Indivisible Okay, would you bow for a word for our please? Lord, we're just ever so thankful that we can gather together as a group to look to see how we can better make our community a more inviting and more pleasant place to live and where we can spend our tax dollars wisely and we can be good stewards of our fellow petitioners money. Just pray that you would be with each of our decisions tonight and help us to make wise and prudent decisions for the future of our community for us these things in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, so we got an approval of the agenda. So I look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Larry, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes, okay, citizen comments, do we have anybody that's logged in that needs to say anything, I guess, Brian, do you know of?
We've got one in here Hunter.
Okay.
I don't know where you guys.
You want him up here, can you guys see me or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can see you.
Come on up here sir, just give your name and an address.
Where you want me at?
Just stand right up here, there's a camera right there in front of the seat. There you go.
You guys see me, everything okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Cody Carlisle, one of the owners of 217 Cedar. Like you guys, great job on Cedar, or not Cedar Street, Second Street, way better than what it was. One of my things that did bring me down here. The lot that's at the corner of Cedar and Second, I don't know what the address is, begging a lot, been begging for years. I thought you guys, code enforcement, back on the 15th of last month. I was told that that was possibly didn't mow. That's been two foot tall, three foot tall for several months now. Here's if you guys could possibly did it mowed or somebody could do something about that. Winter time's coming on, the maester coming in on the tenant that's ringing the house from me. Bugs all summer recording. I'm curious if anybody can do anything about that. That's all I have to say guys.
Okay. Micah, do we know anything about that or we?
Yeah, I think we received a letter, they looks like, it looks like they went out and mowed it and they did a partial job, so they received another letter. That's the one they got approved for the three flags and so they're getting financing for it, they're gonna go out and mow it again. Today is the seventh day, so technically today if they receive a letter and they haven't mowed it, then we can mow it. It looks like basically they went out and did a partial job and that's kind of unfortunate, but we'll get on about that. And they're also in the process now since they got their financing placed, at some point they're just gonna go ahead and start construction on the whole lot, so then we won't have to worry about the grass for much longer, except in backyards.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you Cody.
Okay, so appointments swearing in of the new police officers, item E1.
Yes, here we are, okay.
Yep.
So, I want to give you a quick overview of what's going on with PD staffing, we've been doing a hiring process now for a couple of months. We were, as you all know, we were down four positions. We've got two of these spots filled and that's who we're gonna swear in tonight, we were very fortunate to get two certified officers, sworn officers, so we don't have to put them through the academy. It really is kind of a tale of two cities. I'll give you a quick overview, just so the process that they went through. Written test, I take it back, these guys didn't have to take a written test because they were certified. They had to complete a physical fitness test. Psychological background investigation, polygraph investigation, interview panel. And then they also had an interview with me before they were offered a job, once that was done. Then they had to complete a medical and psychological screening and I'm happy to say that both of them passed everything here. Let me introduce them to you real quick and give you a little bit of background. One is a local born and bred kid. Tyler Priddle graduated from Goddard High School, grew up in this area. And he's been working for the Sheriff's Department for two years now. He got hired right into the road, so he didn't have to work in the jail. He's been a road deputy for two years. And most of our guys, I think, have probably worked with him on and off at some point. So they're very familiar with him and his work ethic and we're really happy to get him on board. The other end of the spectrum is Christian Carrillo. This was really kind of an interesting story because I got an email from Christian one day introducing himself and explaining that he was gonna be out visiting his brother. And his brother's been harping on him to come out and visit Goddard and knew that we had some openings. And his brother's been living here in the Wichita area for about three years. Christian was born and raised in Los Angeles. For the last 16 years, he's worked for the Los Angeles Police Department. He was a gang investigator for a couple of tours, he worked in vice. He was a field training officer. And at the time of his departure from the City of Angels, he was a patrol sergeant in the Olympic Division, which is downtown Los Angeles. Christian came out and met with us. Drove around, looked at the city, took text pictures of the gas prices and was sending those back to his wife. Who didn't believe the gas prices were under $2 a gallon. And he talked to one other agency kind of in the area and by that afternoon called me back and said that he was all in and wanted to move forward with the process, so we kind of expedited that to get him not to have to fly back and forth too many times, we kind of banded it all out in the next trip. And we're really excited to have Christian and Tyler both on board, they'll start field training here soon, we've got about a week worth, a week or two worth of administrative things to do in-house. And then they'll immediately start field training with their field training officers. And hopefully sometime around Thanksgiving, we'll have two more folks out on the road. Still working on the other two, but we're pretty optimistic, we've got at least one of those filled and hopefully I'll have some news on that front a little bit. We're doing a lot of this video stuff on Christian's behalf, his wife and kids are still back in Los Angeles. So they're not able to see this, so hopefully, did you check with them to see if they're on Facebook?
I asked them, they said they're searchable, so.
They're searching, you want to text them to make sure they're on before we start this up? In the meantime, I'll let the mayor or the council members, if they want to say anything to you and then we'll get ready to swear them in and move on with this. We've got a little bit of a crowd, Tyler's got half of Goddard here. Christian's got his brother who I owe lunch for referring to us.
Well, I guess I'll say one thing, Tyler and Christian, thank you for wanting to come out to Goddard. It's so great that you want to be a part of the community and to serve the community. I can't thank you enough, you guys have a tough job. But Fred Ferris, he's a great guy and I think you'll all get along, so thank you very much for coming out and we're happy to have you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We good?
I actually can't.
It'll be recorded. Why don't you guys step up here real quick? Let's see if we can position you strategically so they can see, why don't you guys come over here? They need to see you more than they see me, so. Yep, and we'll maintain our social distancing, you guys. Are they both in the picture there?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Mr. Producer?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'll read this and then you guys, you guys just repeat after me, if you raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Christian. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a duly sworn City of God or police officer.
Of a duly sworn City of God or police officer.
So how we got?
So how we got?
They both made it through this.
It was rough.
Christian, welcome aboard.
Thank you sir.
Tyler, welcome aboard.
Thanks sir.
Looking forward to it, you guys want to say anything? You're millions of people. The amount of followers we have is ridiculous.
They have to be here. Yep, takes opportunity, so.
Okay. We'll kick it back to you in the studio Thatcher, thank you.
Okay, item F, consent agenda. I guess we gotta look for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Larry, second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes, okay, accounts payable. Is Terry there or do I, or do you guys want me to read all that? October 7th, 2020, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna read it, but if you want to go ahead, sir, go ahead.
You go ahead.
October 7th, 2020 for $144,210.92. October 14th, 2020 for $66,001.35. The bulk of the expenditures were related to project costs associated with inspection services and improvement billings.
Okay.
And were most of those engineering costs, were those in the bid for the award?
Yes, sir, they were, they were anticipated costs that were budgeted for, they're standard for each of the projects, it's the city's way of ensuring that the the projects in question are built to the standards set forth by the bond covenants and our engineering parameters.
Does anybody have any other questions? Yes, none, so I look for a motion, approve the.
The consent agenda is taken in one, in one motion.
Okay, okay, okay.
Item F3 is to receive and file the September 2020 Library Board Minutes and the Planning Commission, September 2020 Planning Commission Minutes. With that, we now have item H1, unfit home condemnation case with City Planner and Code Enforcement Officer Micah Scoggan presenting.
Thank you Brian, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Let's go to the next slide please. Thatcher, can we go to the next slide? Thank you, quick background, on March 13th, 2020, the city has conducted a preliminary investigation into a property located in the 1500 block of the Seasons subdivision and have determined based on this investigation that the property is unfit for human habitation. The property listed below, which will be the follow-up address, is being presented in order to schedule a condemnation hearing before the City Council, the attached resolution, which is a requirement for consideration of condemnation will be for scheduling that hearing, allowing 30 days after the last publication per state statutes. Go next slide please. Quick analysis, City of Goddard Code Enforcement Officer being myself, found the following non-compliance with the City of Goddard Code, Chapter 4, Article 7, for the listed property. Below the following constitutes a blighting influence under Kansas statutes annotated 12-1750D. There is defects increasing the hazards of fire, accident or other calamities, sanitary facilities have been disconnected since January 1st of 2020. Unclean list and the property owner has been allowed time to remedy these violations of the city code. A visual inspection of the property from the outside indicates no serious attempt has been made yet. And the Code Enforcement Officer is requesting a formal hearing on the matter. Next slide. These photos are just some of the images that touch a little bit on the condition of the inside of the property. This is quite a serious situation, this is an unbiased opinion, given that I was accompanied by Brooke Brandonberg of the Public Works Department as well as Shealite of the Goddard Police Department for further review and it was decided unanimously based on just general appearance that this house is in a very, very poor condition. And that no habitation should be allowed per our zoning and Code Enforcement Code. Go to the next slide. Financially speaking, there will be a small cost associated with publication. Legally, this was reviewed multiple times by the city attorney. And finally, the resolution as well as all the standards and requirements set by the state law are gonna be abided by. Next slide. It is recommended City Council adopt the resolution scheduling a public hearing to consider condemnation of a structure deemed dangerous and unsafe per Kansas state statutes. At this point, I will open it up to questions, comments, concerns, or anything else.
I had a question as to, does the financial agency that owns the house, are they aware that this is going into condemnation or?
Right, so we will send them a letter per Kansas state law to all lien holders of the property, so if you choose to sign the resolution, we will not only publish it in the paper and send letters to the property owner, but also to the lien holders, which includes the mortgage holder, which is the bank, and HOA, who has several liens on the property as well.
Are there currently people living there?
There was, there is still currently a woman living there, yes.
Okay, any more questions? None, so I guess I look for a motion.
I would motion.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Larry, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, was there, all in favor say no, is there anybody? No, no, saying no, motion.
Very good, at this point, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, I mean to interrupt.
No, motion passes, okay.
Very good, at this point, you would need to determine a date for when you would want to hear the resolution, it can be no less than 37 days from today. At that point, you would have to be December 7th or a later date for the next City Council meeting.
I mean, I guess what date do you recommend, or does the council have a particular date that they want to do?
Well, there's something we'd have to do at the next meeting.
You have to allow seven days from the publication and you have to allow 30 days from the last date of publication. It takes seven dates per publication, so you have to allow 37 days. Given that timeframe, you could only really consider it, the soonest you consider it would be December 7th. Given that it's December, I don't know since it's a Christmas month if that is unbecoming, but I don't see that as being anything particular. It's completely up to the council, it just has to be December 7th or later, it can't be any earlier.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. Well, I guess we move on to the next.
Would you like, would you like the date to be set for December 7th or a later date?
What does the council like, what would the council like do?
Well, she has no water or sewer, does she?
No.
Do you know if there's any electricity hooked up to it?
Yes.
I guess, I mean, to me, December 7th is fine, so. If the council doesn't have a problem with that, then let's just set it for that date.
Well, would you have to move out then after the meeting or what would be the deal?
It would be at your discretion, so after the meeting, if you formally consider it a condemnation, you could give her a certain amount of time to remedy the situation or you can make an immediate determination of condemnation, evict her from the property.
Well, if we have that discretion, I'm not opposed to December 7th. I don't know about the rest of the council.
I would agree with Larry, if we have that discretion, December 7th sounds good.
Everyone, including the property owner, will receive a letter for December 7th, letting them know about the meeting and the seriousness of the matter, including the HOA, the mortgage holder and the property owner. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item H3, receiving filed 2020, quarter 3, department reports.
Begging your pardon, Mr. Mayor, I believe we're on H2, annexation request?
Oh, sorry, annexation request.
Let's go to the next slide, thank you Thatcher, the property owners located at 1531 South 215th Street West have petitioned the city for being annexed into the corporate limits of Goddard, Kansas. The property currently sits on the northwest corner of US 54 and 215th Street West, and according to the realtor, at some point, the property owner rezoned a lot to general commercial, and this is in the county, to accommodate a small commercial business on their lot. With the new rezoning classification as a commercial lot, it prohibits potential buyers from requiring a mortgage because banks view the house as a non-conforming use even though they can exist by right, so there's some discrepancy there. When the City of Goddard annexes the property, the land defaults to R1, single-family detached per our subdivision regulations, which would essentially overwrite the current general commercial classification without the need to go through a rezoning process, which opens up the potential again for the property owner to sell it and new property owners to purchase it with a traditional mortgage. Next slide. This is just a quick review of what I just described. The current zoning is general commercial, it is in the county, it's not in Goddard yet. It's located in the county at 1531 South 215th Street West, it's basically just north of the Dylan's Warehouse across the street. It is in the City of Goddard growth area, so it's in our growth zone for 2030. Currently serviced by City Sewer, it does have City Sewer connected to it, just no city water. It touches our city boundary, which is one of the requirements of an annexation. If it's annexed, it's rezoned to R1, single-family detached. So the property owners can sell it and a buyer can get a traditional mortgage to finance the purchasing of the home. Next slide, there it is, right there with the green star. The dashed orange line is the city limit, the purple bars are all parcels.
How long do we have to supply them water after we annex?
Nothing has been formally agreed on. The property owners don't necessarily care for water because they're selling it. The new property owners could ask for it and potentially, but right now, there's nothing that's formally required. We do have city water mains running to that Dylan, so if we wanted to, we could go under 54 to service them with water.
And we have, this is Brian Sokat, we do have a sewer main running along the east side of the road to the midsection line that then makes a turn east and then heads directly into the wastewater treatment facility and picks up the Seasons and Hopper and, you know, everything to the south of there as well. So we already have existing sanitary sewer in place.
Yeah, and they are, it is servicing the property. There is a small cost associated with publication and legally speaking, it was approved as to form. Next slide. Since there is an ordinance, it first would require a voice vote to waive the reading of the ordinance and then it would require a roll call to approve the signing of the ordinance for the annexation of the property at address 1531 South 215th Street West.
I make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, now. We gotta do a roll call.
Brian, is Terry on or?
No, that, you, yes.
We gotta make a motion to approve the signing of the ordinance.
Okay, motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Michael, and then, you want me to just go through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
Motion passes, I don't know what the ordinance would be.
We all signed an ordinance.
Okay, okay.
The ordinance number will be 856.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Micah. Okay, so now, item H3, correct, receiving filed 2020, quarter 3, department reports.
Yes, sir. We traditionally present quarterly reports the second meeting following the close of a quarter. The purpose of this is to provide department heads as well as the governing body the opportunity to see the progress that the city operations has made year-to-date and to gauge that progress against, you know, past quarters and our progress toward fulfilling the vision statement and the mission statement with the organization utilizing the values of people-first, stewardship, solution-oriented, collaborative, efficient and effective. Next slide please Thatcher. Our cycle takes the mission and vision as well as the community strategic plan that the citizens drafted for us and the Planning Commission into the organizational scorecard and the department scorecards which are presented tonight. With that then, we utilize our employee scorecards to set goals and performance expectations to try and achieve and accomplish the desires of the governing body to meet this end, and then of course, it's all contingent upon resource allocation and then it's just a continual feedback loop, next slide please. With that, we'll begin with third quarter administration report. You can see for period year-to-date, starting with 2020 compared to the previous three years for a four-year comparison. We're pretty much right on pace with where we've historically been with agenda items, ordinances and resolutions with 2019 being a larger year in that we approved a large number of development authorization resolutions during that period. We have submitted for a total for pardon me, for compliance mowing, this year we have not invoiced any for the third quarter. However, as we discussed previously during citizen comments, we do anticipate something possibly forthcoming in the fourth quarter for that, and then we've submitted $413 for the tax rule for folks not complying with coding and cleanup, next slide please. We have 27 employees currently. We have 27 employees currently filling these positions. We have 30 full-time authorized positions. The seasonal positions that you see are the lifeguards. We've had two voluntary separations, and you saw the swing in of two additional officers to fill those vacancies. And we've utilized 990 vacation hours and had 429 hours of sick leave with a total of 424 hours of overtime and 139 hours so far from staff for COVID-related time off. Next slide, please. Utility billing-wise, we currently have 1,908 water customers, 1,840 sewer customers, and we've collected $2,500 in reconnect fees with a bad balance or bad debt. In other words, outstanding utility bills of $30,281, which is about on pace with 2019 pre-COVID. We've moved 1,711 to bad debt, and we have 233 uncollected as of yet. However, we have submitted just over $2,200 to the state set-off program, which is a program that the Kansas Department of Revenue operates for municipalities and utilities that withholds state income tax for outstanding liabilities from the taxpayer that is in the rears with their bills. Next slide, please. We've processed 438 invoices, issued 352 checks, and had $2,141,521 issued. That is largely due to capital expenditures for all of the growth and development that we've had underway. Next slide, please. Municipal court, we've been charged $2,434 in jail fees on 148 total cases with 133 defendants. That difference is essentially multiple charges to individuals. We have a respectable payoff period with folks paying in full or within the 90 to 120 days. We've issued 27 warrants, which is down. And I'd say that's a good thing, and largely due to our increased enforcement, which I'm sure Chief will show you in his report. Next slide, please. Are there any questions regarding the administration portion? If not, I'll turn it over to Chief.
Good evening, Council. I asked Brian early on if I could just say same stuff, different month, but this just seems like it's been a little bit of the same thing. I'll just kind of give you a few of the updates. Activity across the Goddard and County has been really down due to COVID. I don't know that it's really affected our call load much. We've been having little bursts of activity, like our pellet gun shooter a couple of days ago that really slammed us pretty hard. We continue to use practices and equipment to ensure the safety of our officers and the public during this time. We are following, you know, the best practices that are being utilized by both Wichita PD and the county. So we're doing our best to mitigate this, but, you know, unlike other areas of private and public sector, we can't just stop what we're doing. We actually have to have cops out there doing their job and working inside here as well. One thing, even with our down manpower, my focus for the officers has been to at least maintain high visibility and be responsive to calls for service. So because of that, I don't necessarily want them out doing a ton of enforcement and proactive self-initiate activity because I need them to be available for calls for service. Although, they're all good cops, and that doesn't stop them from taking action when they see things. Next slide, please. Some of the activity for the third quarter, 241 total cases in this quarter, 58 citations, traffic warnings. As you see, you know, this is a pretty consistent theme with us. Since I got here, we're more focused on traffic safety in those areas that need traffic enforcement, you know, our high-crash locations, construction zones, school zones, things like that. And a lot of very positive work can be done just by, you know, issuing warnings a lot of times. So I'm always happy when I see that the officers are using good discretion and issuing warnings, and that's a pretty good balance. You know, we aren't a revenue-generating city. We don't use traffic enforcement to generate revenue, and nor should we. So our purpose is usually to educate and to try to curb accidents at high locations and high-risk areas. Arrests have remained pretty consistent. The night shift officers have really stepped it up in being out and checking buildings and residences and letting people know that their garage doors are open, things like that. So that's a proactive activity, but it's also preventative because we're hopefully keeping somebody from being victimized. As you recall, personal citizen contacts, that's a, that was really a directive of mine when I got down here, that I wanted each one of the officers to, on average, try to do one non-enforcement-type contact, where they literally are parking their car and getting out and just going up and talking to somebody, checking on neighborhoods, things like that. Even those are down a little bit, but you can see that in that quarter, you know, the handful of officers that we have been working have been out there still conducting those very positive kind of community outreach activities. Murder assist alarms are very consistent. Animal calls are almost identical to last quarter. Next slide. Our major crime stats for this quarter, five assaults and batteries. That's up a little bit, not surprising. That's pretty consistent with areas around the county where, you know, quite honestly, people are just tired of being locked up together. I think they're starting to get on each other's nerves. Auto thefts, we, that both of those are trailers that were taken right from downtown. If you look at your quarterly report, you'll see where I mentioned that in there, that thanks to some really good police work by Officer Shealite and others, where we've got the suspect identified. He's a very prolific trailer thief around the county, and now it's just a matter of catching him with the stuff or in the act. But he's hit several other jurisdictions, but our guys are the ones that got him identified. Thefts, that's mostly going to be shopliftings, things like that. Burglaries, DUI enforcement, the night shift officers, when things do come down, they are out there still looking for dangerous drivers. Assisted outside agencies, you'll always notice that number's going to be going up before. About a year ago, we didn't even document those. Now, whenever we go to assist the county or another agency, our officers are pulling a case number so we can document the number of times that we're actually out assisting other agencies. Still a fair number of drug arrests and warrant arrests for this quarter. Next slide. Crashes are up a little bit. That's pretty common this time of year when you've got more traffic out on the roads and especially around our high-crash locations. You can see that, you know, almost half of our crashes occur right on 54. No fatalities, but we did have three injury accidents. Most of them are going to be property damage. We did have a couple of pretty severe crashes out on the highway. But again, that's the areas that the officers are really focusing their traffic enforcement on. Next slide. Sad to report that, again, we're still not able to really get out and do any of the community outreach initiatives that this department, I think, is really known for. You know, the kids aren't really back in school this time of the year. We'd be involved in school visits and parades and, you know, open house tours and things like that. We're just not able to do that. And our folks miss that. I mean, they really do miss being out there with the with the community and doing these type of things. But as soon as things start to relax a little bit, we'll be back out there involved with the public and getting back to our pop with a cop and coffee with a cop and school tours and everything else. But we're really kind of at the mercy of this pandemic more than anything right now. Next slide. Last quarter, we reported having four open slots with the resignation of two of our officers. We still had two open spots to begin with due to a departure and then the military leave. As of tonight, we've sworn in two new officers, and we're really excited about that. You know, we've got areas around the country, and you all watch the news just as much as I do, where large cities are losing police officers by the hundreds. And we're starting to see the result of that. You know, we've got folks that still realize this is a very noble profession, and they don't want to give up on it, but they just can't work in the communities that they were sworn to protect. And they're looking for places like Goddard where they can be part of the community, they can live in the community, and they can fleece in the community. And these two guys that we sworn on tonight are going to be incredible assets to this police department. And we've got a real hope for a couple of prospective other officers that we're trying to finish up the process on now. So I'm hoping to at least get one of the other spots filled soon and get him into the academy, and then we'll work on that over-hire spot, which really was kind of an extra for our military deployment. But our goal right now is to fill these three spots and get these folks out on the street. Next slide, please. And I guess that's it. I'd be welcome to, or happy to answer any questions you might have or comments.
How's our court system working?
It's hit or miss, Councilman Zimmerman. It just, you know, we had gotten the court back into session after being off for months earlier this year. And then shortly after that, we had the COVID exposures for a few of the officers here and had to cut things back down. Today, they did have their prosecutors' meetings, and I believe tomorrow they're back in session. So I think we are getting back to normal for the most part. Brent, you have a question, or are you just waving at me?
Do we have to jail them or something until court, or how does that work?
Well, it depends on the charge. I mean, for the most part, we're still business as usual, but most court cases are really just court date-appointed. They're either charges where they're given a court date at the time of their arrest or their traffic citation. We really don't lodge a whole heck of a lot of people. You know, the Sedgwick County Jail is still open for business, and they've told us that, you know, don't shy away from it. If somebody needs to be lodged, then lodge them. But we've done a pretty good job of handling most of our stuff through city court and either giving them court dates at the time and releasing them, or, you know, for the ones that we do need to lodge, we're taking them down there.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to Brian in the studio.
I guess it's my turn. So in the third quarter, we've received two grants, actually three grants. And our numbers are slowly creeping back up, as you can see, except for our interlibrary loan, which are way up. So we're sending a lot of materials out to other libraries, mainly within the consortium. We changed out the story walk at Tanganika. And you can see that, that's the new one that's going up. And that'll be up through the end of the month. I attended the Kansas Leadership Centers or Leadership Edge class. We started some STEAM classes online. So Carrie's doing some science experiments and stuff for the kids, and we've got several of them that are the ones that are learning remotely that tune into those and come get the kits so they can participate. So we've been out and about in the community. We've obviously been to Tanganika several times. We've been to Metalark Farms. We've been to the Kansas Aviation Museum, just doing storytimes and doing informational things out there. So they can, the kids can see some other things. We actually started doing storytime in person again, and it was outside until it got too windy and cold. And now we've been over in the community center with social distancing. So we've had as many as 26 outside, but since we've moved it inside, there's only been about 10. So. And as you can see, we've got all of the movies out of the vault, and they're out so people can actually browse. The first month we had them out, our circulation increased 46% over the month before. So people are enjoying being able to look at them and browse and pick them out easier. We finished children's room, finally got the one space painted and the windows up so they don't fall down anymore. And so that was exciting. And then with the grants we purchased, we got a green screen and some lighting and an iPad so we can do some videoing, some of the STEAM stuff and do some visual effects and stuff. And then we also got the Kansas National Books Grant. So those books we got to purchase with grant money as well. So I'm still busy and doing lots of things, trying to be out in the community as much as we can. And that's it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, first slide, please, Thatcher. All right, by the numbers, Public Works was a lot like PD. We didn't change a lot from last quarter to this quarter. One of the big things you'll notice is the number of rereads, and I mentioned that at the last quarter, second quarter report. And since then, we've had the passing of the bulk meter purchase, which are scheduled to be delivered hopefully within the next 30 to 45 days. Another big item we had was locates, which I don't see on here, but our number of locates has gone up significantly with the new subdivisions that are being built. We're out there pretty much daily locating water sewer infrastructure so that way gas lines can go in and electric and those kinds of things. Something else we're proud of at Public Works is, again, the very last one, we've met all of our KDHE permit standards again, which we always strive for. And hopefully, we're always going to meet all those standards. Something else that's worth watching as development moves is the increase in the daily inflow at the wastewater treatment plant. You'll see it's up approximately, you know, a little less than 20,000 gallons. And we're going to have to watch that because as these new subdivisions come online, that plant's going to have more inflow, and it's going to be more of a challenge to meet our numbers. We will meet them, but it will continually be more of a challenge. Next slide, please, Thatcher. Some of our, well, this is second, but fortunately, it is third. Sorry about that. Some of our accomplishments in parks this quarter was implementing the splash pad descaling project that was brought to Council recently. The picture to the right is a picture of those tools together on the pipe that the water runs through. And as I mentioned in the meeting, that's how they use that energy, so to speak, to condition water. Another thing we did, we partnered with the Prairie Travelers to fill some cracks in the trail. Prairie Travelers paid for the materials. We picked it up in the dump truck, and we took it out in the trail and packed those cracks. We'll continue to watch them and stay on top of that as needed. And as every year, we winterize the pool complex to prepare for winter. Next slide, please. And the water and drainage, another item that had come to council was the installation of the eight-inch valve at Wells 7. The picture to the right is one of the Public Works crew members, Nick, down in the hole working on that. We've updated, upgraded, and revised our chlorine residual testing procedures. We had an older spectrometer that was, we had had worked on, but it was starting to give us some issues. And then we were looking, we were getting variable water residual readings. So we updated our spectrometer, and we moved to using individual pre-measured packets for our reagent. That way, we can make sure that our processes are the same, everything's... Every single time we do it, we use the same amount of reagent, and we have a good spectrometer. And we've noticed that our chlorine residuals have come around and are more consistent since we've done that. We've improved drainage. Back, please, one more. Thank you. We improved drainage on the water and protected the water transmission line on the west end of 7th Street and replaced a malfunctioning hydrant in paint. Next slide, please, Thatcher. Streets of Rightaway and Riceaway, we rehabbed several sections of broken sidewalk. We rebuilt all the truck-mounted salt and brine application systems to prepare for winter. We rehabbed the alley behind Strew's Locker. It was getting pretty bad, big potholes. So we went and dug those out and filled it. And of course, we continually sweep the streets. You'll see a lot of that in the fourth quarter, do the leaves falling particularly in the old town sections of town. But we'll do what we can to keep all those. But we'll do what we can to keep all those gutters and streets clean from the leaves. And of course, we paint crosswalks every third quarter to prepare for school to start. Next slide, please. If you go back one, please Thatcher. There we go. In the wastewater and sewer, we cleaned and conducted maintenance the east basins of the wastewater treatment plant. The picture you see to the right there is of Mike Holmes and Chris Schrader down in the empty basin, literally hand cleaning all the air injectors and everything. It's not a glorious job, but it is a thankless job and it's very important. So I I give those two crew members credit for that hard job. During that maintenance, we pulled the mixer pumps. That's an item that was at council last meeting for repair. And then we secured additional utility easement along 23rd Street for the Forest Main for Arbor Creek. Next slide, please. Some of our projects that we had put down for a third quarter was the rehabilitation of Second Street, which happened very end of second quarter and into the first couple of weeks of third quarter by the time we finished it. It is much better than it was. We've got a little washboarding there, which is hard to hard to avoid unfortunately on a gravel road, but at least we're not dealing with the potholes we had prior. And then another one that we're really excited about and happy at Public Work is the upgrade of salt brine brine production and storage operation. In the photos below on the left, you'll see the old brine generator. And on the right, you will see the new brine generator. And the new one looks like it hadn't been used there, but after this picture had been taken, we had just finished making 10,000 gallons of brine. It's clean, it's easy, it's in a safe. So that's a great addition to our winter storm program. Next slide, please. Our fourth quarter, we have a few few topics that we want to tackle for that quarter. One is to develop a sidewalk rejuvenation program. What we will do in that program is come up with a a set of criteria that a sidewalk must meet to be rehabbed. That way we make sure that it's done on an equity basis on the sidewalks in need versus sidewalks that aren't as in need. That will be coming to council, hopefully maybe next next quarter, if not right after the first of the year. The another thing we'll bring next quarter is the to develop and implement neighborhood speed awareness program. This is the item we talked about, the possible usage of solar speed signs in neighborhoods to make people aware of their speeds and hopefully slow down a little bit, think about their speed at least. Hope to bring that to council in this following quarter. And another thing we're going to do is we're going to partner with some local organizations and people, some Boy Scouts are going to get involved and we're going to plant trees. We're going to plant trees in Linear Park, Means Park and the community garden right now. We're open for other ideas. If people have ideas for good locations for trees, we're not wanting to plant trees for the sake of planting trees, but we want to plant the right tree at the right place so it can grow and and prosper in that area. Any questions?
Is the the Lions Club still helping you all plant trees? And I know that you guys had a partnership doing that. How's that going?
Yeah, yes, they are. And Dan Funky had approached myself and I and Chris Schrader is working with me on that. He's really our tree guy, but they are actually going to do most of the planting. We will work with them. The city will pay for part of the trees. Lions Club will pay for another part. We will work with them. We'll dig the holes, get the trees on site, and they're going to have all of their volunteers come out and plant.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, Brooke, thanks for all the work you're doing with that. Is there any chance to plant some trees along the highway?
Well, initially we had talked about planting some along the South Frontage Road, but we're we're maybe holding off a little bit because of the R cut project that's coming up. We hate to plant a tree and have to remove a tree, but that is is still an open option. So possibly, possibly, I can't say yes. Absolutely yet, but it is, we've been talking about it.
Thanks. I think a lot of that's K dot. We have to get permission from K dot, don't we, on that?
Yeah, yes, we do. To a certain extent, we do. If it gets too close to 54, absolutely. Well, if there were no more questions, thank you much. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is the third quarter planning, zoning and code enforcement report. So we've seen significant increases, you could probably have guessed from for new single family homes. And for 2020 Q3, we had 22. Last year, the same quarter, we had 12. That's an 83% increase. We've also seen new multifamily homes, whereas previously we had seen fewer, I mean, zero for last year and followed the previous years as well as we haven't seen a lot of multifamily, but they've increased this year. I think they'll consider the increase the next couple of years as well. Let's go to the next slide. Quick review, 22 single family detached permits, which was higher from last year's third quarter by 83%. The total permit fees for 2020 Q3 were 63,674. Total project value for quarter three was 10,495,709. Next slide. Nuisance abatement, as you know, mowing, as you heard today, is still an issue around the city. In 2020 Q3, we had three 2020 year to date. So the quarters leading up to Q3, we had about 18. It always seems to catch people off guard during the rainy season in April, May, June. It always seems to catch them off guard. Jump motor vehicles, we didn't have any this quarter, but for the year we had six nuisance one and then total for the for other 14. So we have random brush piles as people are being locked up in their home for COVID and everything else. They're starting to do general labor around the home and they'll have brush piles and things that kind of get out of hand. And the neighbors call me and I go over there and say, hey, you can't have brush pile. And you know, you need to remove it at some point. You can't just leave it around. People take cars out of their garages or their backyards, put it in the driveway and sort of leave it. So then we have to issue them a junk car notice. So that's something that's just kind of been coming up, just general, general things that don't necessarily fall into the mowing category or or the general environmental category, but there are nuisances or other. Next slide. Development activity. So Arbor Creek, as you know, we have several subdivisions going in all around the city. Arbor Creek has sold 20 lots out of 59 of phase one. There are 245 lots total in this development and that leaves 91% available for sale. Cloverleaf has had three 37 building permits pulled for this development. There are 133 lots, so that leaves 72% available for sale. Elk Ridge has sold 62 lots at a 77. There are only 15 lots remaining for sale. Rustic Creek has submitted letters of credit for this development and they will allow us to begin process for bidding after we submitted the engineering reviews before the governing body. So soon Elk Ridge will be locked up and then we'll be on to just monitoring Cloverleaf, Arbor Creek and Rustic Creek simultaneously. Next slide. Commercial development. So far this year, we've seen a small increase in the number of commercial projects starting up. This year, we have had nine commercial building permits issued. These projects total about 1,101.68. We've collected about 9,106 total permit fees. Commercial development can usually be something desired, but with the increase in residential development, we're hoping to encourage more commercial development to follow on. There's enough density and population to accommodate. The Goddard Genesis project is continuing to move forward. The developer is in the process of getting financing for Hampton. Next slide. We met every month in planning commission. This is an agreement by the planning commission that will meet every month, regardless if there's anything to talk about. We had plenty to talk about this quarter though. So we had July, August and September, we met and discussed different planning related issues. That's it for me. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Micah.
All right, I'm presenting the third quarter financial report. Next slide. Here we have a fund balance change from the beginning of the quarter, July 1st, not September 30th. Everything's where everything, all the funds are sufficient fund balance for operations through the end of the year. Next slide. This is a breakdown of general fund year to date for the last for the last three years through the third quarter. As you can see, revenue overall for general fund, we're at 86% of budget. And then on the expenditure side, we're at 61.63%. These are, that percentage will go up during Q4 as we still have transfers before the end of the year. But everything else is on pace with where it should be. More than sufficient fund balance for general fund operations. Next slide. And this is just a graphic representation of revenue expenditures year to date through these three years and fund balance. Next slide, please. This is the water fund. We are at 73.81% of budget revenue through the year. Revenue is up from where it was last year. We were charged for services, which is water sales was at 606,000 last year, not the 680,000. On the expenditure side, we're at 45.95% of budget. And again, that percentage will go up during the fourth quarter as we have additional transfers and debt payment. Next slide, please. Again, this is just graphical representation of expenditure and revenue and fund balance compared to the last two years. Next slide, please. Sewer fund revenue and expenditures were at 76.68% of budget revenue through the year. Sewer sales gone up again this year. On the expenditure side, we're at 69.56% of budget expenditures. All of the debt service payments have been made for the year and we will have another 75,000 in transfers that will take place in the fourth quarter. Everything else is sufficient, on pace with where it should be. Next slide, please. And again, this is a graphic representation of revenue expenditures through the three, two comparison years. Next slide. And finally, we have the street fund. We've collected most of the highway fuel taxes that we will collect. We have another about probably collecting other just under 55,000. We get a final. We've we've got one more of both the state and the county fuel tax that we can expect. Expenditures are at 47.85% year, like I discussed earlier in the year. You know, we didn't spend all of our street maintenance line item this year. We just did Second Street instead of our usual street maintenance plan. So that additional money will be transferred into capital improvement. Next slide, please. And again, it is a graphical representation of revenue expenditures through the comparison years. That should be the last slide of my report. And I'll entertain any questions you have.
Any questions? None. Okay, item eight four. Utility rate discussion.
So this is continuation of where we left off last week as far as talking about the water and wastewater utilities and how they're funded. This week, we're going to just basically take a look at how our rates compared to some of the other small cities in the Wichita area. And we included Wichita's rates as well. Everything we're going to show you is based on a 4,000 a month gallon water customer. And that's the number we baseline we use because that seems to be about our average wastewater customer. Next slide, please. So first we have our water rates and Goddard's kind of in the middle there highlighted in blue numbers. You see that the first column coming going left to right is the base rate. And our base rate is $7.50. But when you add the debt service rate, which is the next column, our true base rate is $19.94. And we have some comparison cities here to show where their base rate is for water. You see Andover the top there has got an asterisk next to it. I didn't forgot to put that note in here, but Andover purchases, Andover residents do not purchase water from the city of Andover. They purchase from Wichita. So that's their base rate number is going to be a little higher just because they're buying from outside the city. But as you see there, we're not the highest for a base rate. We're also not the lowest. Wichita is going to have a much lower base rate just because, you know, they're such a bigger utility. The only one that's significantly lower than us besides city Wichita is Cheney. And then in the second column from the right, we have usage per thousand gallons. And we're very low there. That's why I've repeatedly talked about, you know, looking at our usage numbers to increase that to try to maybe give us the opportunity to draw down the base rate a little bit. But again, just you can see that we're the lowest of all the cities we're comparing ourselves to, even lower than the city of Wichita. And then on the final column, we have what is a the monthly cost for a $4,000, 4,000 gallon customer. For that, for us, that would include the base rate, the debt service and two units at $1.50 per thousand. Because the first 2,000 gallons an hour rate structure is covered within the base rate. So it's only, it's actually a base rate plus two units at $1.50 per unit. And we are fairly low compared to our peer cities. And we're even lower than the city of Wichita, just on the water side for this this level of customer. And next slide, we'll look at wastewater rates. Now here, we're a lot higher because we do have that significant debt service in addition to our base sewer rate. We, when you combine our base rate with our debt service, we do have the highest base for wastewater customers. Our usage again is, and this is, and I want to specify that the or we're comparing here is in city customers who are residential. So this is, this does not include commercial customers. They have additional fees on them. Customers outside the city also have additional fees plus a higher rate. So but when you look at the far right column for a 4,000 gallon water customer, the sewer side of that is 6592 is for the base would be the water bill for a 4,000 gallon customer. The only, the only city amongst these that are higher than us is Rose Hill, or excuse me, or close to us is Rose Hill and Bel Air, but we're both higher, still higher than both of them. And then the final, next slide, please. On the final here, we have the combined water and sewer bill for a 4,000 gallon customer.
Next slide, Thatcher, please.
You see here, like I said, we have one of the lowest water bills, but the wastewater size where we're high. And then third column there, you see the combined water sewer bill for this customer is 8886. Again, we are not the highest, we're not certainly not the lowest when you compare these. But see, Bel Air is 10689 and then Rose Hill is 9355. And I believe Cheney recently lowered their wastewater bills because they had a debt retirement. So Brian, is there anything you want to add to this?
Honorable Mayor and Council. You know, we are on the high side of competitive as it currently stands. The city of Wichita has the benefit in that out of all of the first tier suburbs, only the cities of Goddard and Mays have their own independent systems. We, I mean, even the city of Derby buys their water from Wichita. Wichita is able to essentially subsidize their users with the consumption of the surrounding suburbs. You couple that with CDBG and being a top fifty population city, they receive additional utility assistance that the rest of us just can't get. And I, I know the Regional Economic Area Partnership through, I'm sorry, Wichita State through the Environmental Public Finance Center collects these water and sewer rates every year or two. In addition to that, these, this stuff's easily located on the internet. Goddard's position within the metro is, is really unchanged over what it's been in the past. Now, if you'd asked me six to eight years ago, we were high, but that's because we were the only utility that had a, a mechanical treatment plant where Mays had an, had already had one that was paid off, and it was for a much lower population. And then, of course, Bel Air Park City had their own Chisholm Creek Utility Authority, which they combined their two jurisdictions to make a, a utility for wastewater. So we, and I appreciate Matt presenting this. I know we had shared this previously, and, and these numbers have been updated, but our position within the list is really unchanged at this point. Do you have any questions for Matt or myself?
Brian, I think I brought up in a conversation with you a while back ago, a lot of the complaints I'm getting about the water is the quality of water that we have. Have we called the city of Wichita to see what, what that would cost to maybe have a partnership? Or, or have we even reached out yet?
We certainly can reach out. I know in two thousand and six, there were discussions with the city of Wichita as far as having them operate our wastewater utility before the facility was purchased. And it would have been, it was, it was determined that it was projected to be split fifty-fifty between the city of Wichita and the city of Goddard. And the city of Wichita would have ultimate authority in who would hook into that system. And we have reached out and will follow up again, Mr. Mayor, to, to the city of Wichita as far as what's, what steps might be undertaken, or how we can begin that conversation to see what sort of benefit our rate customers may have for that. It's certainly something that, that we could look at pursuing.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would at least be worth the time if it's okay with the council. A lot of the complaints I'm getting are that, I mean, they're just, people are unhappy with the quality of water that we're providing for the price. And if we can get a better quality water, or at least look into maybe purchasing it from the city, they, that might be an option for us. I don't know.
Well, the thing is, that I see is that we give up our water rights. If we stop using our wells, we give up the water rights. And I don't think we want to give up the water rights to our wells. We, we were allowed so much by the state as far as water out of those wells. And when we stop using it, then we, then we, then somebody else can use those rights instead of us. Isn't that right, Harland? I don't know if Harland's with us or not.
Yeah, I'm here, Larry. Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we are in the perfection period for, for some of those water rights. We, we have perfected some, but the, I think the last hundred or so million gallon, something like that, we're currently in a, in a perfection period. And yeah, it is, it is kind of one of those things where if you, if you don't use it, you lose it.
Okay, well, I guess, go ahead.
Well, what, what we can do is we can, we can certainly reach out i- if that's something, as, as the mayor said, the governing bodies interested in pursuing, it would, you know, it's roughly one quarter of, or to a third of the cost of what folks pay is water with the other portion being wastewater. And, you know, it's certainly something that, that we can at least inquire about and then come back to you. And we can decide at that point if the conversation would be worth, worth pursuing further.
And the only other big concern I have is once you partner with them, then all of a sudden they want to dictate on what you can do and who you can hook up to and, and limit you because they want all the business. And then all of a sudden, you haven't got any say-so on who comes into your city because they, they just won't allow it.
And, and that may still be the case, sir. But again, we, we don't know at this point because we haven't, we haven't opened that communication. But whatever you want to do, we, the staff will be happy to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, it's, it's up to the governing body, whatever you guys would like to do. It's just the biggest problem that I keep on hearing from everybody is that they're upset with the quality of water. It needs to be softened. It, and I, I think when I spoke with, when I spoke with Brooke, that'd be terribly expensive to try to do a massive water softener.
Well, Mr. Mayor, one, one thought would be, if we look at the Wichita water rate of twenty-five twenty-one, it is more expensive than what we're paying right now. Most of the costs that they were talking about is in the debt service on the wastewater. But, but also with Brooks descaling technology that they've deployed over at the splash pad, I would be curious as to what that would cost to implement for, on a city scale to not necessarily soften the water, but change the chemical makeup so that it didn't harden in the same way, just like on Splashpad.
And that's a, that's a good option. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
Counsel, I can definitely look into that. Actually, the company that we purchased that tool from contacted me today. I have not questioned the cost of those type of appliances, but I can do that and bring the cost to you.
Okay.
Yeah, see if we can, like, see if you can get us a deal like on the Splashpad. That'd be great.
I will do what I can.
Are there any more questions on the water rate discussion?
I, my, I would have a question as to if it would make sense for us to try to advance our debt payments somehow, to get ahead of, of these debt payments, or if, if it's one of those things where it is what it is, because some of these other municipalities have the same kind of, or I guess Mays has the same kind of facility, but it's paid off. Well, how, how important would it be for us to try to?
We inquired about this five, eight years ago. And unfortunately, with how KDHE does the low interest loans, which is what funded the wastewater facility, I think that debt is bundled into a larger debt issuance. So we would still be obligated to pay the entire portion of that. And in fact, we recently, within the last four weeks, reached out to Bond Council to ascertain if this was still in fact the case. And, and we believe that to be the case. In other words, once we sign up for this, it's, it, it's a done deal and we're not able to restructure that.
Okay.
But that's a good question, sir.
Do you know what we're paying for interest on that loan?
Just over two percent. I don't remember the exact amount off the top of my head, sir.
Any more questions from anybody?
Are we going to need to make any sort of a change in the structure to keep us from getting behind on the debt in the near future here?
Oh, no, sir. W- w- we don't. And we currently pay a rate of two point three eight percent is, is the interest rate on, on that, that loan. The loan total, when we first took it out, was a principal amount of six million eight hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. As, as we discussed previously, and I had included, and I think in, in a previous report and email, from twenty twenty to roughly twenty twenty-four, we pay five hundred thousand annually. From twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine, that'll increase to six hundred thousand. And, and that's, that's for the sewer side of things. We have the storage tank that increase our storage capacity to a million gallons. If you remember, prior to the storage tank, we would have to go into water conservation mode, and we would have to issue water warnings regularly because we would be in danger of, of running the tower dry during peak consumption in the summer. And fortunately, we no longer have that issue. Did, did I answer your question, Councilman Zimmerman?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we didn't run the red and then have to make up for it.
No, sir. And in fact, that's part of why we schedule, why the rates are structured the way that they are, is so that we make certain that, that, that debt obligation's covered first and foremost. And when we look at the, the rate structure, I mean, it's the overwhelming majority apportionment of our utility bill is debt to pay off that facility. So the actual operations and, and O and M costs are, are you know, in the minority of, of the utility payment. It's just, again, it's something that was mandated by KDHE that, that we undertake this improvement. You know, we had to improve our lagoon systems, and that's what we did. And, and, you know, we, we weren't at the table when this happened. And certainly, I know you've been on the governing body the longest, and, and the situation that got us to this point where, you know, you kind of had to make that decision when that was mandated. All of the, all of the events that happened to that point was even beyond your control. So we're all kind of just managing the situation to the best that we can. Bless you, Councilman Trailer.
The only other question I had is, is that, is any way we could take just a small amount of the sales tax and try and use that towards the, those improvement fees on the sewer and on the water towers?
That's something that, that we have discussed at the staff level. Given our, our most recent obligations, we would have to refigures to what extent that might reduce any future capital outlays. Because we right now have approximately just over half a million dollars a year dedicated for the next four to five years for growth and development in and around that area. That's all infrastructure related. So that would essentially leave us about half a million dollars that would go to parks or other streets or other improvements. And that assumes that we don't have any sort of economic hardships that would reduce that revenue stream. So when we talk about the upcoming rate structures, we can look at, at giving some of those scenarios to where we may be able to offset, you know, a portion of that. From a, a from a financial management and best practices standpoint, that's something that you want to try and avoid. But certainly, it's, it's allowed by statute. And so we can present that to you. It's just, it's not usually undertaken by municipalities to do that for ongoing operating costs.
Any more questions? None. So I guess we'll move on to item I, City Administrator's Report.
The Star Bond, we've had no additional draws since, since the last one. So, you know, we'll present that back here as soon as we have another draw. So we have just, just under a percent and a half remaining. And next slide, please. You can see the September twenty-eighth image on the left with the October nineteenth image on the right as the health club and childcare facility is, is currently under construction, and they're doing work on the interior as well, which we hope to provide some pictures in a future meeting on with the digging of the pools and whatnot. Now, the structure, the lower portion on the right-hand side is the actual swim park, the aquatic center, the two, the, the pools that have been financed with public funds with the larger left portion being private funds that will be the water park. Next slide, please. Now, you can see Arbor Creek here with the new sidewalks and the entrance for the upcoming Fall Parade of Homes. Next slide, please. We've issued just, just over two point nine, so just under three million in specialist, in temporary notes that will eventually be special assessments for that project. There's two hundred and forty-five lots total with forty-three lots, I'm sorry, forty-three lots in phase one. Next slide, please. St. Andrews, that's continuing to, to build out and is essentially completed, but Thatcher got the drone out and took pictures of kind of the last infill for, for that development. Next slide, please.
This is Sarah.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on St. Andrews, all the lots are sold, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Can, does the city have any control over having the developer, development, whatever, take down the sign at the entrance, the south entrance that basically says lots for sale, contact, blah, 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 blah? Because really not needed.
Look at that. Because I, I honestly don't know.
There's, there's been a lot of chatter on the neighborhood Facebook page regarding.
I, I noticed that the other day, actually. For some reason, I thought of that.
So.
There's no, and there's no other phase of St. Andrews, is there?
Yeah, it's, it's completely built out.
Yeah, okay. Well, then, I, has, has Paul Kelsey handed over the development to the HOA?
No.
No? Okay.
That, that won't happen till there's. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess somebody just needs to reach out to Paul.
I, I'll, I'll be meeting with him on Wednesday and can certainly bring that up.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And next slide, please. Cloverleaf, you can see the pad sites for the, the duplex townhomes that are under construction, as well as the foundations on the right-hand side for units that are already sold. And the left side, which is Martin's Court, is, is primarily to, to fit the rental need that, that we have within our community. Next slide, please. Just showing that, that we have Just showing that, that we have a, just uh, just over two point two million issued in uh temporary notes for these improvements. Next slide, please. Uh, Elk Ridge, uh, this is the uh first home in the final phase. And the next slide will show you uh homes currently under construction in uh phase two, which is abutting uh the current phase. So you can see uh that phase is, is almost completely built out, but not entirely, but uh should be very soon. Next slide, uh Rustic Creek, uh, we have the uh letters of credit received from the developer and the engineering services agreement's been executed and we have actually already drawn on the uh the first request for that. And we'll be uh coming to you soon with um a request for the uh additional uh resolutions for the issuance. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the R-Cut, uh, nothing new to report here as we're still um in the design phase, following up on KDOT's directed changes, which uh, again, this is a state and federal highway. So uh, KDOT has significant say in the design of, of the roadway. And they requested some, some changes and that change, that those changes, which are predominantly stormwater and storm flow within the system, it doesn't impact the uh, the, the, the surface volume that we're, we're channeling. It's mainly how it's being channeled. Uh, that change pushed the uh bid letting date to uh late first quarter, early second. So we're hopeful by February, March, twenty twenty-one uh will be going to uh, to bid for that project. Next slide, please. Uh, the Frontage Road Project, you can see the current uh road outline. And if you drive by the uh, the construction staking and flags, that's already underway. And so it, it's, it's exciting and we're uh looking forward to that. We will have some message signs out. I know uh Public Works Director Brooke Brandon-Birds been uh working on, on those message signs so that we can let residents on one eighty-third as well as uh travelers on Kellogg that there'll be some disruption for a period of time. It won't be anything permanent or um long-term, but there, there will be some sporadic inconveniences to, to travel through that area. Brooke, did you have anything to add as far as uh, or Harland as our seat here?
Uh, it's likely the um sign will go up either late this week or early next week to give the residents of the area some couple of weeks um notification before they shut that down. So I'll keep you posted on that, Brian.
Thank you. Uh, next slide, please.
Uh, yeah, Brian, I'm sorry if I could just.
Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead, Harland.
I think it's primarily the uh, the southbound lane is gonna have to be closed for a couple of days as they do the tie-in and, and the bank drive reconstruction. So north, northbound, I don't believe there's gonna be any eruptions, but uh for a couple of days um to be determined by the contractor and, and with our approval, southbound, one eighty-third uh will need to be closed.
And we'll, we'll communicate that just like we did uh previously when there was some uh culvert and stormwater drain work done on one eighty-third that prevented some travel through the area. We'll put maps and, and put that out on our Facebook page and, and the city webpage as well, as far as directing folks to uh Maple to go around rather than southbound on one eighty-third and identifying where that break is actually gonna be at. So essentially, everyone north of that location will need to uh utilize Maple to get in and out for, for that couple of day segment. Like we said, it won't be anything permanent, but it will be uh, a, a minor inconvenience for a day or two. Next slide, please. And then some upcoming agenda items. The list is not uh, can, it's not complete, but it gives you some ideas. We'll have a community center uh discussion for November second. Uh, we'll have discussion to improve live stream so that we can have the ability to have software that'll show not only the bench and the speaker, but the PowerPoint slides, because right now we kind of oscillate between showing the bench versus showing the PowerPoint slide. So we'll be coming to you for uh, uh consideration for improving our streaming technology. Uh, the Police Department and Public Works will be coming to you for some equipment purchases um for year end. And then we'll have a real estate contract for the sale of the uh city ground on North Main. And then we'll receive a uh land grant uh request contract hopefully on November second. If not, it'll be November sixteenth. We'll follow up with the utility rate discussion also on November second and sixteenth. We'll have a Cox Communications Small Cell Agreement presented to you, which is I, similar to what we did with Idea Tech back in the summer of twenty nineteen. It's just, this would be for Cox Communication. So we'll have that presented at November sixteenth meeting and then we'll begin discussions for the uh twenty twenty-one work plan by quarter to kind of identify what uh, what are the, the statutory obligations that we know we have to meet as far as budget timeline and forward planning for that. And then start working in some of the tasks and items that you, the governing body, would like to see us bring to you for the uh twenty twenty-one uh calendar and fiscal year. And then December, I'll be finalizing that work plan and uh discussing our utility rates for twenty twenty-one. So that concludes my report for now. Are there any questions for myself or uh the rest of the team?
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, governing body comments. Larry, what do you got?
Oh, I don't know a whole lot. I think I'll just pass this trip.
Okay, uh, Sarah, what about you?
Sorry, it wouldn't let me unmute. I don't have anything.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, okay, Brett?
Hey, Sarah, I have a chainsaw for you. You wanna borrow it?
For what?
To, to take your sign down. You want this so badly.
Oh. That has been mentioned on the Facebook feed. I'm like, oh, kidding.
Uh, Brett, anything? That's it?
That's it.
Michael, what about you?
Uh, yeah, I am really uh, really excited to hear and uh see that we've got two new uh police officers in our community. That's something that has been on my mind is uh just being short-staffed on that end. And I just wanted to express my support for uh Chief Ferris. And if there's anything that we can do or need to do from the council's end to make Goddard uh maybe a better, more attractive place for new police officers, if we have seats to fill or if we need to expand the force, um, please, please just bring that up and uh bring it to our attention.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate it. Okay, well, I don't have much of anything other than I just wanted to thank um uh the two new officers, Tyler and Christian as well, piggyback off of Michael there. We're very happy to have you um on, on the Goddard team. I know Fred's gonna treat you right and uh, he's a great, great man and I hope uh, I hope everything works out with you guys. Um, as far as the department heads, thanks for giving you, giving us all your reports. I think you did a great job and looking forward to the, the last quarter. So other than that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Wanna make that motion?
Second. Motion by Larry, second by Brett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.